All the selectmen are present. We'll start it by transmitting Treasury Warrants 11, 11A, 12, and 12A. Motion so moved. Second? Motion made in second, all in favor? You opposed to its name?
No.
I'm sorry, you're, oh, it's unanimous. I'm sorry. And we have approval of selectman minutes from March 14, 2011, and March 28, 2011. We'll take them up together unless there's any issues.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Same.
One abstention. Thank you. Our seven o'clock meeting with Shelley Newhouse, health director and Tina Scanlon, town nurse, to come and tell us about the new seasonal flu clinics. Good evening, ladies.
Hi. For those of you that don't know, this is Tina Scanlon, our new public health nurse. She started in July. This year, our flu clinics have proved to be challenging to plan because of budget cuts across Massachusetts. We, our allocation went down by eighty percent from last year. So just to give you an idea, last year, we were allocated 1,380 doses of flu vaccine. And this year, we were allocated 280. And that's been pretty much in every local city and town in Massachusetts. But with some planning, and we decided this year to privately purchase flu vaccines. The first time that we've done it, we use our clinic expense account, and we bought 300 doses. So we have a total of 510 doses this year for flu vaccination. We're planning two clinics. We have a school-based clinic, and the schools get their own allocation of flu vaccine. So last year, the flu vaccine allotment for the schools was 500 doses. And this year, they got 310 doses. So they weren't cut as bad as the town-wide allocation was cut. Our first clinic is the school-based clinic, and that's on October 20th. It's at the middle school. It's from 2:30 to 5:30. And we encourage parents to pre-register. Last year, we gave out 335 doses to the school-aged kids. So this year, we have 310. I think we'll be fine. I don't think, you know, it should be an issue with running out of any vaccine this year. Our townwide flu clinic will be on Saturday, October 22nd, from 12 to 3:00. And we're opening that up to the public. Our state vaccine is only, we have certain allocation agreements that we have to abide by, meaning the state vaccine is only good for those ages five to 19 years of age. And then we privately purchased, which that will be good for anyone that wants to come. So administratively, on our end, we'll handle the flu clinic a little differently. It'll run the same, but we'll just have different setups of where we're going to send people to get their flu shots. I just don't know if anyone had any questions about the allocations.
Any questions or comments?
I know we had gotten some information on this, but folks who are just learning about this the first time, can you explain a little bit about the state allocation of five to 19 range bracket?
Yes. The state, the Department of Public Health has allocated flu shots across the state to those individuals who are ages, they like to say, two to 19 years of age. But in Wilmington, we decided that we don't have the capabilities to vaccinate those under five years old. So we decided we're going to use the allocation from ages five to 19. Where they, why they did it that way, the state, you know, I don't know. That's what they told us the guidelines were. So we were allocated a certain amount for that age group. And we also were allocated a certain amount for healthy individuals that are uninsured and underinsured. So it makes it a little tougher on our end to find out who, you know, who that is when they come in, but we have a screening form that we can do. So we decided to purchase, and that way, we can just give the vaccine to whoever we want. We don't have to worry about saying, no, this one can't have it, and this one can. So it's a little tricky, but...
So the hope and the expectation is between what the state has provided in distributing that, administering that within their guidelines and their rules of the game, if you will, plus what the town has purchased, you expect and hope to be able to service whoever comes in?
I think we'll have plenty. I don't think that we're going to have a shortage. Especially, you see all, the CVSs and the Walgreens are offering these, the flu shots. And most of the time, it's free of charge. Your insurance will cover it. So more of these places are purchasing. So you're seeing them everywhere. Come and get your flu shot, walk right in. So I think a lot of people are taking advantage of that.
I think it's all been said, you know, it's a great program, and just hopefully, people will take advantage of it, especially the children in the schools.
Yeah, and you can go to our website, and we have all the forms there if you want to read the forms beforehand. People can look at those. And then the school website, you have to pre-register for their shot. So we encourage the parents to go and look at their website, download the forms, and they have to bring the forms with them.
Very good. Thank you.
That's a good point, that they can go to the website and get the forms downloaded and get them all squared away before they come see you. Any other questions or comments down there?
I think it's all been stated, just the priority list in terms of who comes in, if we don't have enough to go around, that, you know, those that need it in a higher risk situation are kind of put to the forefront. I'm assuming this is already being done, but just for the public knowledge, is, I'm assuming there's cross-communication with the schools, getting the word out onto the Wilmington Public Schools website, and also cascaded through the elementary schools and so on, so that the homes and parents know that it's happening.
Yeah, I think shortly, the school's going to be sending out a Connect CTY. Last year, they did it by postcard, but they found that this year, they're not going to do postcards. I think they're going to do that, it's the Connect CTY, where they're going to make a phone call and let the parents know that we'll be holding a flu clinic. It's just all getting out there right now. And I think it's, I think I saw it on their website, putting it on their website this week.
Excellent. Thank you for all that you were doing.
If I may, am I right in assuming that the reduction in supply that we're receiving from the state is based on a funding issue and not on a deficiency of the supply itself, correct?
Both.
So I want people to get a sense of whether or not they will maybe potentially experience difficulties if they wait later in the season, there might be a reduction in supply from anywhere?
No, I don't, not from, say, like a Walgreens or a CVS or Rite, because they're just going to purchase as much as they can. From, they purchase direct from the supplier.
So that's what I'm getting at, is the supplier is able to make as much as they want. It's not like we're having issues manufacturing this.
There's waiting lists.
There is.
Yes. I ordered, I went on a waiting list, because I knew back this summer that we were going to be, they let us know that we were going to be a shortage. So I went on a waiting list back in June and July for this year. And then they called and said, it's ready, here it comes, and we have all the vaccine in-house.
So I'm thinking it would be prudent for anyone who feels so inclined to get vaccinated to do it while they can, because who knows, right?
Yeah, I think you've seen, if you look out there, I think this year, I've seen the flu shots available earlier than I have ever before. You know, usually, it's later, like November, December. And last month, I was seeing some of the local pharmacies already advertising, get your flu shot.
And the only other question I have related to that is, I remember, I think it was maybe not last year, the year before, we had two separate shots, one for H1N1 and one for the seasonal flu, and this is a combined shot now, is it not?
Yeah.
They've put the two things all together.
It's all H1N1s, yeah.
Okay.
One shot.
Can you discuss maybe from a public safety standpoint, why it's important for a population to pursue this? I know individually, I don't want to get the flu, but why do we go through the exercise of educating and getting people to go and get vaccinated? I mean, I think I kind of have a general gist of it, but I really want the population to understand that this is for the public, for the population's safety on the whole, as well as individually. And I don't know if you want to expand on that thought process at all?
Well, just for, I mean, you and anyone that's, that you are, you know, in close contact with, that's immunocompromised or anything like that, you being protected is also protecting them. And just, you know, that's pretty much the bottom line. It's just so it doesn't spread, so that you, as a healthy individual, doesn't spread it on to someone that cannot fight off the disease.
Very good, thank you.
Flu vaccines are the, you know, the most successful public health vaccination, I think, campaign that's out there. It's, you know, it's easily preventable, you know, get your flu shot, wash your hands, and...
I find it ironic, it seems like, I don't know, it was maybe last year, there was such a buzz about, oh, the H1, the swine flu is going to get everybody sick, and people kind of joked about how, what a non-story that was. It was a non-story, because of the successful campaigns of people like you guys. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Very much. Our 17, our 7:15 appointment is Michael Arbagonis, police chief, with the accreditation from the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Association, and result of Wilmington's participation in the Massachusetts Law Enforcement Challenge. Chief, I'd like to welcome you here tonight, and I see a lot of your men are here. And I'd like to point out especially Lieutenant Brian Pupa, who's the father of a new little girl recently. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's a handsome representation of the Wilmington Police Department, which is ever-expanding. I think we have a few more. We've had a few recent arrivals from the stock assigned to the Wilmington Police Department. I think we still are in a queue for a couple more, so it's been busy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, members of the board. I recently corresponded with the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager to advise them that the Wilmington Police Department's application for the Law Enforcement Challenge, which is a statewide program that basically assesses your traffic safety programs, initiatives, enforcement activities, accident data, citation data, and you put a package together, submit it to the state, and compete with all the other communities who submit as well. And I'm very proud to say that the team, which represents Brian Moon, Brian Gillis, Brian Herman, and Joe Desmond, really are the gentlemen that really put the package together, planned a lot of the programs. It's supported by every member of the department. They all did a super job. Out of the categories for the Law Enforcement Challenge, this year, we came in with the top gold honor in the state, which I'm very proud. So that puts us fourth among all the communities, or fifth among all the communities in the state. I don't typically categorize the state police, because they are a category of one, only they can submit theirs, or they always won it every year, but they do a super job. So, you know, proud for all municipalities to come in fourth. A little bit about the Law Enforcement Challenge. It's a joint partnership between the Massachusetts Chiefs of Police and the Governor's Highway Safety Bureau under EOPS-S. And they basically challenge law enforcement agencies to put their best foot forward for their traffic safety programs. They put together a document that's probably about a half an inch thick, that documents all the different initiatives that we take out through the year. That would be maybe the, you know, the pre-prom educations that we do, the safety programs we do in the schools, our traffic initiatives, which would be Operation Yellow Blitz, which is coming up pretty soon, if not starting this week, where we follow buses and stop people for, you know, not paying attention to the buses with dropping the students off. And the great thing about the program is it basically makes us introspective. We look at what we do as a department and try to find out how we can do it better. So I think that the basic benefit to this is that that's what we're doing, and I can't be any prouder of the entire department on their successes. We submitted, this is our, four years ago, we submitted our first challenge based on 2008 data, 2009 data, 2010, and we've gone from bronze, silver, to the gold last year, and then this year, we topped the gold category. There's probably about 15 or 20 agencies in the gold category, so it's a pretty prestigious event. So as we continue through this, you submit the package, it's reviewed by people who are pretty much the, you know, the cream of the crop in traffic safety. And they look at, through it for all different dimensions, and it's scored in each category. The benefit to that is we get to look and identify specific areas where we need to do better, specific areas where, you know, we're at the top rating for that. So that allows us to better organize our programs for the coming year, and that's why we've seen a constant succession up the award levels, because as the gentlemen sit down and review it, they decide what we need to do better next year and how it moves us up. So the grading scale really helps a lot. I'd be happy to know that this year, we were awarded a $2,500 radar system for one of the Cruises, as one of the awards for coming into that category. So you sit down in a room, and there's vendors all around, they all have different products and stuff that they've donated to this program, and this year, you know, we get to pick fourth, so that was, that was pretty cool. Saved the town $2,500, so. The other thing that I wanted to come to you tonight, I don't know if it's next on the agenda, but the Police Department on September 29th of this year will be accorded the state accreditation. This is a process that's been going through for several years. Last year, we received state certification under the accreditation management of Brian, Lieutenant Brian Pupa, and all of the staff within the department, mostly the lieutenants, the deputy and I get together on a regular basis, and we review our policies, we update them, make them contemporary to today's laws, contemporary to the things we have going on in the Police Department, the building, things like that. There's well over 180 different standards that we look through every year and reassess to make sure we're doing the best we can. So, you know, the program provides, you know, a norm for the agency, the judge's performance. It also provides a basis for correcting any deficiencies that might be there. If we have a law that is on the books that really isn't contemporary to what's changed recently in the SJC or whatever, we can update that. It requires us to commit all our policies and procedures in writing, so it leaves little question as to the direction that we're supposed to take and how we proceed. It equalizes it as well, so if they follow the procedures, everybody gets the same level of service across the board. It promotes accountability amongst the agency personnel, the even-handed application of the practices, provides a means for independent evaluation of our operations. So every year, like the Law Enforcement Challenge, we get to look back into the organization and figure, where could we do better, where our deficiencies are, and move forward in that. So I'm very proud of the, you know, the team that put the application, put the process for accreditation together. And like I said, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of paperwork that they go through. They sit down in front of assessors that come in, and they pick them apart with a fine-tooth comb, make whatever adjustments they need. And so we'll be receiving that award on the 29th of September. So I'd just like to give my folks a round of applause, I'm very proud of them. They've done a lot of hard work, and, you know, they're very deserving of these two achievements, so appreciate it. Thank you. I'm good.
Well, you should be proud as the chief of this department, and also as a resident of the town, we should feel confident in all the work that you've done. Just by going from bronze to gold plus in the four years shows that you have made some adjustments, done what you had to do to get that award. And the accreditation is also a big thing. Congratulations on that. Congratulations to the department.
Appreciate it.
That's big. Questions, comments?
I'll just say quickly, once again, congratulations to the chief and the deputy, but more importantly, congratulations to the men and women that are on the front lines. And as the chairman stated, not only being a member of the board, as a father and a husband in the community, we appreciate your service, knowing our kids are safe, our neighborhoods are safe. And once again, it means a lot that you people are out there, and we appreciate everything that you guys do, the men and the women in the law enforcement. Thank you.
I think that points have been made. The only thing that I would add is that folks who are in law enforcement in other towns, other cities, and at the state level, the comment that's been made to me time and again through the years is the visibility that the department maintains day hours, nighttime hours, et cetera. So that's just something from the outside looking in that I want to pass along and thank you for, congratulate you for.
Everything's always already been said, I just want to offer my congratulations as well. I know, you know, certainly the police end of things is kind of near and dear to all of us, as is the fire, because you're on the front line, as has already been stated. I think it's a real testament to you as a department to go above and beyond your day-to-day assignments and actually go out there and represent your department among other departments. And to come out on top among your peers is perhaps one of the best compliments that you can receive, to know that, you know, your training and everything that you do on a day-in, a day-out basis has been acknowledged by your fellow department members in other communities. So just want to say thank you, job well done. Also wanted to take a moment to compliment the department for the 9/11 ceremony. You all came and looked wonderful, certainly represented your department and the town of Wilmington, and I just want to say thank you as well. So thank you.
Yeah, well said. I hate being last after my eloquent colleagues have an opportunity to say their words, but...
There's a reason for that.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy, that's well said. Continuous improvement, you mentioned it, or at least alluded to it a couple of times, is one gold, so where do you go from here? Well, I know, and we all know, that you'll continue to look for ways to improve yourself. There's always, even when you're winning gold medals, there's always little aspects that you can improve upon, and you've proven that you will continue to do that, all of you will. So I feel safe, you know, as a father and as a resident. I love seeing your Cruises driving through our community, and it brings me a great sense of security and peace of mind when you come down the neighborhood and I see you there. So thank you for everything you do. Thank you for the continuous improvement, and please keep up the good work, we depend on it. Thanks, thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Thank you very much, thanks, guys. Communications.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have the memorandum that Police Chief Arbagonis just alluded to in his remarks regarding the Massachusetts Law Enforcement Challenge. It's certainly not necessary to review that. We do have correspondence from Deborah Goddard, the chief counsel of the Department of Housing and Community Development regarding subsidized housing inventory and the biennial update. The Department of Housing and Community Development is in the process of updating the Chapter 40B subsidized housing inventory. That is a measure of the community's attainment of affordable housing goals for the purpose of the comprehensive permit law. As you know, a developer may appeal to the State Housing Appeals Committee for review of any local action on a comprehensive permit if it is, if the community is less than 10% of the community's total year-round housing stock is subsidized and restricted for low or moderate income households. So that what they've done is they've done their review, and they've provided the information to us that we can use. This happens as a result of the 2010 census, when there is a new calculation as to how many housing units are in a community. So if you take a look at what I've provided to you and really go to the back page, you can see that we have, according to the state, 710 total units that qualify out of the census of 7,788 housing units. And that brings a percent subsidized to 9.12%. The magic number is 10%. There's no need to be concerned, as we've talked about the fact that we've been at 10% and now with these new housing inventory numbers, it brings us just below. However, as soon as the 10 Burlington Avenue development is approved, and that is, as you know, on its way to being approved, as a 108-unit apartment complex, that will then bring us over the 10% mark, and the town will be, will be good in terms of its ability to control its housing stock until at least 2020, when the next census occurs. So that will, that will take us over that mark, it'll bring us over 800 and clearly over the 10% threshold. You also have a draft report from Mass Housing regarding the cost examination for the Regency Place rental development that was billed pursuant to a Chapter 40B. And it's an analysis that Mass Housing does in order to determine whether they've been in compliance. And what I would bring your attention to is the executive summary, which indicates, and again, this is a draft, but which we can comment on, and we'll have Mrs. Hamilton taking a look at these numbers, but based upon the draft, they've completed an analysis that indicates that they believe the developer has not exceeded the Chapter 40B maximum fee and overhead allowed to be earned on this development by the developer as a limited dividend entity. They're required to meet, again, certain thresholds, and they've done that. They cannot earn more money than what is allowed under this program, and the audit indicates that they are in compliance. The board has correspondence from Brian Curtin, the chairman of the Middlesex County Retirement Board Advisory Council, regarding the election of the fourth member of the Middlesex County Retirement Systems. This is something that is just brought to the attention of the board each year. The term of what they refer to as the fourth member on the county retirement board expires on December 31st, and they are announcing that there is an election for the position for a three-year term that will be conducted by the advisory council, which serves as the election board. They've provided us with a copy of the posting for the notice of election, it has been posted. Every employee will receive this as members of the Middlesex County Retirement Board, assuming that they're members. If they're a municipal employee, they're a member. And they will have an opportunity to run for this office if they would like, and also eventually vote when the ballots are distributed. The board has received information from the Mass Municipal Association regarding the statewide photo contest. We bring this to the attention of residents who are interested in photography and wish to be considered for recognition through the Mass Municipal Association. We've had folks from Wilmington in the past admit photographs that have been published. If they are interested, they can go on the website at www.mma.org, or they can call my office, and we can provide them with information on the photo contest, where they're looking for a photo that would depict the individual community, and then they would, they distribute those photos. And speaking of photos, we also would encourage individuals, if they're interested, to provide photos both for our annual report and especially for the municipal calendar, if anybody has any photos that they'd like to submit. Each year, residents have been very generous with their photos and their time, and we've been able to publish photos in the municipal calendar. They can provide them at any time to the office. It doesn't go to press until probably March or so of next year, but would be certainly happy to hold on to them if you have them. The board has also received correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association, announcing the annual MMA statewide essay contest for sixth graders. The theme, as it has been in the past, is if I were elected leader of my community, I would make a difference by. And then they ask that the sixth graders who are participating write an essay on that basis. Last year, there were 2,200 essays from nearly 100 communities. Wilmington has participated each year. I think we've had at least two winners over the five or six years that the contest has been ongoing. We've contacted the school department, and they again have agreed to participate, and I suspect that at some point, the chairman and I will be invited to speak to the sixth graders at an assembly for that purpose. So it's been a nice program. Students not only are able to win awards from the MMA, they're also able to learn more about local government. And I know in Wilmington, the sixth-grade team has used this as part of their curriculum each year. You have a memorandum from me, Mr. Chairman, regarding the special town meeting. We've written to all of the boards and committees and commissions, the school department, the department heads, to advise them that at your meeting of September 12th, you voted to call a special town meeting to be held Saturday, December 10th, 2011, at 10:30 a.m. in the Cushing Gymnasium at the Wilmington High School. The primary purpose of the meeting is to appropriate funds to construct a new high school and to raise these funds by borrowing the amount necessary to construct the high school, plus the available MSBA grant. In addition, a special town election is to be held on Tuesday, December 6th. The polls to be open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. to consider a referendum question asking voters to authorize passage of a debt exclusion to enable the town to raise funds in excess of the town's levy limit. We're asking the board today to consider establishing a date that petitioned warrant articles can be submitted for inclusion on the town meeting warrant. And to that end, Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate if the board would consider a motion, or at least discussion on a motion, to formally open the warrant for the special town meeting of December 11. of December 10th, and to close the warrant for petition articles at a date certain. I would recommend at this point that that could be at the close of business on Tuesday, October 4th, which would continue to give residents an opportunity, if they are so interested in submitting articles for the town meeting. The town's primary objective is obviously the construction of the new school. We'll also be submitting an article to purchase a quarter acre of property that is currently owned by the Baptist Church that they have allowed the town to use over a 20-year period that extends on to the high school property, actually goes up in towards the softball field. This would really kind of codify that arrangement with that purchase that the board has authorized through executive session. And in addition, there will be an article relative to the ability to lien the cost of the tree removal that took place on Lowell Street. So I would appreciate if you would give that consideration. And then we would be able to review warrant articles at the board's next meeting on October 11th. And you could either sign the warrant at that time or wait until October 24th to sign the warrant. We then get into timelines, legal timelines, and there would be a need for a finance committee hearing to review the warrant articles. And we've scheduled that at this point for November 21st. So respectfully, I would ask the board to consider formally opening the warrant for the special town meeting and closing the warrant, setting a closing date for petitioned articles at a date that you've...
Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd make a motion that we call a special town meeting as described by the town manager, and we open the warrant articles and close the warrant articles as described by the town manager on those specific dates.
Second. Okay. Motion made in second. All in favor?
Thank you. So the date would be October 4th, the close of business, which is 4:30 p.m. The public's information. They need at least 100 signatures of registered voters to get an article on a special town meeting. That petition, if you're so inclined, should be submitted to the town clerk's office. We would expect that copies of the warrant will be available, certainly at the finance committee hearing, but we will have them made available once the Board of Selectmen approves a warrant. And they would be able to be picked up certainly by the end of October. Mr. Chairman, the board is being asked to consider the request of the Recreation Commission to conduct its 44th Annual Horribles Parade on Sunday, October 30th, 2011, at 4:30 p.m. It's a request from the Recreation Director, Deborah Cipriani. At the same time, she's inviting the members of the board to join the festivities, either as spectators or volunteers. The youngsters with their families are encouraged to gather at the Public Safety Building by Rotary Park at 4:30 p.m. They would then proceed up Church Street to the high school cafeteria. And any of the costume children would be invited to join at the cafeteria for holiday treats.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
Move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the regular business before the board.
Okay. Public comments?
Please, Mr. Smith.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
I'd like to share with...
Mr. McDonald, we've played this game of asking you to sit in your chair like everybody else does.
Mr. Smith, I have some papers. I'd like to read to the town.
Mr. McDonald, you can do that from your chair. We've gone through this for four or five meetings, Mr. McDonald.
Point of order. Can you share with us where it says that, any evidence, bylaws, bylaws of the town where it states that you own this table or something like that, Mr. Smith?
No. Is there any other public comments?
No, this is kind of a point, Mr. Smith.
Any other public comments?
Mr. Smith, you're kind of disrespecting the town again.
I am not disrespecting you, Mr. McDonald. You're disrespecting the board. Every time I've asked you to sit over there, the last few times, you've done it.
Mr. Smith, there's no reason why I can't share public comments.
All right. New business or committee reports? No, you're done, Mr. McDonald. You're done.
Sir, I'm trying to...
New business. You're done, Mr. McDonald, unless you agree to sit over there like everybody else does.
Sir, this is extremely important to the...
Okay. New business...
...contract with Gilbane Building.
New business or committee reports?
We did not approve that at town meeting, sir.
New business or committee reports?
Sir, excuse me. You're disrespecting the public comments that are on the agenda, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Mr. McDonald, you're done. Just like everybody else that sits in their seat, you don't have to get up at that table.
Mr. Smith, it's on the agenda, okay?
Okay. New business or committee reports? Mr. McDonald, you're done. You're done.
Yeah?
Okay. New business or committee reports? Thank you.
No charge on the entertainment.
New business, committee reports?
You know, yeah, I want to acknowledge and just, and talk about some positives over the weekend, but it's hard to do in the context of what we just witnessed. I don't even know what I want to say here. I guess it seems to me, just from my simple little mind, sitting where I sit, that there ought to be some mechanism that we can put in place, legal or otherwise, or through procedure, or through voting practices or something, so that an individual can't come and make a farce of these type of meetings. And I'm not asking for anything here tonight. I certainly don't necessarily want to engage anyone in conversation. But I've grown very weary, and I know, based on how you're handling the situation, Mr. Smith, I know you're wary of it too, and I suspect we all are. And I'm pretty confident that those watching are pretty wary with it too. I feel like we've got to find a way to control this.
Honestly, if I could, I think...
Please.
The way exists under Chapter 39, and specifically, a public meeting does not ensure that every member of the public gets to speak no matter what. And furthermore, even at a public hearing, and even when somebody is recognized and given the opportunity to speak freely, it's within the province of the chairperson to establish the ground rules in order to preserve order. And in this particular case, in case folks who might be watching haven't seen the numerous other occasions where the chairman has asked this same speaker to please sit in a location that every other member of the general public is asked to sit, and given the opportunity to make public comments, even when there's absolutely no legal requirement that obligates the board to do that, that courtesy is extended time and time again. But the chairperson has the right to do exactly what was done this evening, is that if somebody doesn't want to respect the ground rules that are laid out that are perfectly reasonable, then that person doesn't have to be recognized. And in fact, I'd say it shouldn't be recognized. And I think the chairman made the right call. And in fact, if somebody doesn't follow the rules and doesn't follow the rules of order that are established, they can be removed by law enforcement or some other officers. So I'm glad you brought it up, because I, you know, I sit here and I wrestle with this all the time. When we go through the same thing over and over and over again, if folks are watching, I don't want them to be left the impression that the chairman is being curt, or rude, or unfair, or anything else. It's just that we've been through this time and time and time again. And at some point, the chairman has to say, I'm not going to allow one member of the general public to abuse the time, not of the board, certainly our time, but the public's time. The public has an agenda, and the public has the right to assume that the board is going to take up the items that are on the agenda. And just because the opportunity is afforded to engage the public in public comment does not give anyone the right to drive the agenda of this board, does not give anybody the right to drive the agenda of this town. And I think the chairman made the right call, and it's absolutely within his authority under Chapter 39. And frankly, if you ask for the authority, I think we already have it, and I think it was exercised quite well tonight.
Thank you. I agree. Mr. Chairman, I completely agree that you took the right course of action tonight. I don't want to imply otherwise. I really do. I just, it's, what aggravates me is that you have to keep on taking that same action. And I wish it was something that we could put into place that would not make it necessary to go through this exercise. That's what I guess I'm getting at. But thank you, Mike.
And you had some good stuff to say about this past week.
Oh, yeah. Forgot about it. Yeah. You know what? It was a great weekend here in Wilmington. And those of you that participated in these events, I imagine will concur. Saturday, we enjoyed the community fair on the, across from the common, on where the Slane School Green is now. And it was very well attended. I was there for a while, and it was just a great event. The various organizations from around town were there, talking about what they do for the community and for the larger community on the whole, as well as the farmer's market was there. And so, again, I just, it illustrated what Wilmington was about. Sunday, early morning, and through most of the early morning and into the afternoon, was the half marathon and the 5K walk-run. And again, Wilmington showed what Wilmington's about: volunteerism, spirit, community. It was a wonderful event. We fortunately had great weather. But I just want to pay just all the compliments that I can muster up to all of the participants, the people in the race, all of our public safety folks that came out and helped us out and kept the race course safe for everyone, and all the volunteers from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the other organizations around town. So thank you, Wilmington, for showing off what you're about over the course of the past couple of days this past weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Judy?
There is nothing left to be said.
Okay. I would like to thank all the board members for wearing a orange tie or a blouse here tonight to recognize the leukemia awareness month, which is September. And that's it. Thank you. Important dates?
Mr. Chairman, the High School Building Committee next meets on Thursday, September 29th, at the high school library at 6:30 p.m. That's a public meeting of the High School Building Committee. We're inviting folks, if they're so inclined, to participate in the annual town cleanup on October 1st, Saturday, October 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Participants are asked to meet at the Department of Public Works offices at 135 Handover Street. All residents, regardless of age, are invited to join to assist in cleaning up the Wilmington's parks and streams. If you have hip boots, you would be wise to take them. We will provide work gloves on a first-come, first-served basis. The town hall will close Monday, October 10th, because of Columbus Day. The board's next meeting is October 11th. Just want to give you advance information on a couple of events coming up. We begin the series of fall cleanup opportunities with brush drop-off beginning on October 12th, and then again on October 15th. That's Wednesday and Saturday at the old Main Street recycling area. On Wednesday, you can drop off brush between 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., and on Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with the card that you get from the treasurer's office. Also, on October 13th, there will be another in a series of public information meetings on the high school building project. It will be held at the high school auditorium at 6:30 p.m. We'll be able to provide much more detail in terms of proposed layout, building imagery, cost estimates, that kind of thing, because we will be having to make a submission to the MSBA by October 7th. So the October 13th date, I believe, will prove to be quite informative. And residents are encouraged to attend the meeting at the high school auditorium on the 13th of October. That's a Thursday evening. And then, just to reiterate what the town nurse and the public health director, Mrs. Scanlon and Mrs. Newhouse, indicated earlier, the school-based flu clinic from grades, for children in grades K through 12, will be held at the middle school from 2:30 to 5:30 on October 20th. And to remind parents that they should pre-register. And then we'll have the townwide flu clinic on October 22nd. That's a Saturday here at the town hall, from noon to 3:00 p.m. And again, the town has made an effort to purchase enough flu vaccine to try to make up for the difference in the allotment that we received last year. And we, at the same time, just want to reiterate to encourage people to, if you can, get the flu vaccine from a, from your own medical provider. You'll find that most health insurance plans will cover the cost of the flu vaccine. And that concludes the important dates.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So, vote.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Chairman? Thank you.